Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for September the 5th, 2024. I am Mike O'Reilly, its chairman, it is 7:01. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're going to call the rolls, starting on my right.
I'm Nick Smirglio, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Anna Brozick, commissioner.
Bruno Maeney, commissioner.
Robert Westlin, commissioner.
Thomas Duneen, zoning enforcement officer.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Thank you. Moving along, we'll do general public participation. If anyone here, some of the general public would like to address the commission on any issues not on the agenda tonight, or on any agenda coming up, this is the time to do that. Please raise your hand, anyone in the audience.
Just clarify, if you speak at a public hearing, it doesn't matter.
On the public hearings, yes, there'll be time tonight to speak to the public. Anyone online would like to speak in general participation? No? Alright, then we'll move on to our first public hearing.
We do have one change to the agenda tonight before we go into public participation, Thomas, if you want to.
Yes, it was requested by the applicant for RAA 2024-01 that the first item be moved to the last item since the applicant who would be here for the public hearing is going to be a little late.
Okay. Then the second item, RAA 2024-02.
I think we have to vote on that.
A change in order?
Yeah. It's a change to the agenda, yeah.
You have to vote on that.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to move RAA 2024-01, File 1036, to the end of the public hearing.
Second motion by Condon. Second. Second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All. Oh, it's unanimous, moving it.
I'm sorry, who was the second? I apologize, who was the second on that?
Brozick.
Thank you.
RAA 2024-02. That's withdrawn.
Uh. The applicant has asked to withdraw it, and they have asked that their withdrawal letter be read into the record, dated August 20th, 2024, to the commission. As the owner of DSO Mechanical, I have always been deeply invested in Monroe, where our company is based. The proposal for 715 Main Street was not just about creating apartments or retail spaces. It was about revitalizing a neglected property in line with the 2020/10 and 2020 POCDs. These reports emphasize the need for rental apartments to diversify Monroe's housing options, allowing both empty nesters and millennials to continue calling Monroe home. I am not a professional developer. My initial vision was to take a property I owned at 7180 Main Street and transform it into a mixed-use complex, serving as a welcoming gateway to the Monroe Southern entrance. However, the project's scale proved too challenging for a small local company like ours to finance and execute. In response, we proposed the 715 Main Street project as a more practical, manageable initiative to enhance a visible blighted property. This small endeavor would have provided us valuable experience while positively contributing to the town's growth. The inclusion of apartments was intended to secure the necessary financing to achieve our goal of improving Upper Main Street. Despite our earnest efforts and significant investment, we are disappointed by the commission's adverse response to our plans. Our intent with the 715 Main Street development was to pursue a feasible, smaller-scale initiative in line with the community's expressed needs. We sought to work collaboratively with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, relying on their guidance to achieve a project that would both revitalize and underutilize property and provide a meaningful addition to the town's landscape. It has become evident, unfortunately, that the commission is not inclined to support developments like this, which are appropriately scaled for our one-point acre lot and aligned with a more village-oriented vision. Given the commission's apparent preference for larger mixed-use or residential projects on parcels of 15 acres or more, we regretfully withdraw our STD application for 715 Main Street. Sincerely, Michael DSO, DSO Mechanical.
Alright, it's been withdrawn. Next, we have SCP 2024-04, which is 588 Pepper Street. This is continued from August 1st, 2024, for the applicant.
Can you share the screen? I'll read the exhibit into the record while we're waiting. Exhibit number one, description is the letter of extension by Solely Engineering, documented dated 8/29/2024.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Maitack, open solely engineer, professional engineer. So for our SCP application for 588 Pepper Street, we submitted a letter on August 29th to request an extension of the public hearing until September 19th to allow more time for us to address some of the comments from the town with additional steps. I'm more than happy to go over how we responded to the majority of the comments or like run through the project and try and more clarification on anything as you need.
Alright, so you want to wait till next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we might as well wait because we don't. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, that's fine with me. Thank you.
So we'll hold this until September, what did you say, 18? 18. September 19th. The public still has to, he's allowed. Okay, okay. So we, I don't think we have any decisions out of this, but if the tribal trio tonight has any comments on this application, this will be the time for that. If anyone in person, please raise your hand. Anyone online, please raise your button. Press your button to raise your hand. Alright, it doesn't look like there's anything, so we can go ahead and move on.
Alright, thank you.
See you in two weeks. Alright, so we have a new application. ZCA 2024-03, 1380 and 1314 Monroe Turnpike, 43 Bird's Eye Road. Do you have these?
I do. Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, September 5th, 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees at Monroe Town Hall. ZCA 2024-03, 1380 and 1314 Monroe Turnpike, 43 Bird's Eye Road, Zone Boundary Change Petition Application from an RF2 to an RR at 1380 Monroe Turnpike, 1314 Monroe Turnpike, 43 Bird's Eye Road, Bird's Eye Estates LLC, Negbrero and Sons Construction LLC, owner Jay Edwards and Associates LLC representative. Notice was published in Voices twice, August 21st and August 28th.
Tom, can you go ahead and read the?
Yes, exhibit number one, received 716 2024 is the application plan set by Jay Edwards. Exhibit number two is the Planning and Zoning Administrator Report submitted by Kathleen Gallagher, documented 8/21/2024.
Okay, thank you. So, for the applicant.
Chair, Commissioners Chris from Silverwood, former CEO of the 10th Avenue Road, and here from Connecticut, here on, yeah, the applicant. I'm new, Jason Edwards, online. Um, that's also here on Connecticut. Yeah, and Jason, if you could throw up the aerial. While I'm just doing the intro.
Yeah, just need to share my screen here.
Uh, so yes, we are here for a proposal to change these pieces that were stated from the existing RF2 proposing to your recreational residence district, your RR district. This piece is located just north of Monroe Turnpike Split with Backroom Hill, Backroom, you know, beers off to the west, and this Monroe Turnpike continues to east. We're just north of that. We're also north of other, uh, yeah, there we go. Uh, other dense house developments such as High Meadows, the Grasso piece that's at 1271 Monroe Turnpike, just south of us. You can see that right there that Jason's highlighting. And we're also just north of another RR district where Bird's Eye Road is. There was an RR district established, you can see it there that Jason's highlighting. You can see the road coming in off of Monroe Turnpike and heading basically right up to our piece where it dead ends. Um, and basically, you can even see there's, there's a property delineation there, which also looks like a continuation, the driveway into this piece, which is bounded on the west uh, by the road, I mean, yeah, by, on the west by Monroe Turnpike, and then on, it's down the east side by Halfway River. I've obviously been in front of this commission a lot recently with a number of pieces, larger pieces where there's, you know, been applicants who've come before you for, for housing development. There's obviously tremendous demand for housing development and to grow the housing stock in the town of Monroe. You know, back in the day, um, uh, you know, it was conventional subdivisions. And when the, when the rates were really just kind of basic, it was these conventional subdivisions that you come in and you develop large portions of these lots. The nice thing is that you have this recreational residence district, this RR district, which really looks to try to preserve uh, open space in a very controlled manner, preserve as much open space on these larger private pieces. It's limited to, to properties that are above 25 acres. So it's not for all types of developments, but for ones like this, it affords an opportunity where instead of just being limited to your traditional 15% open space, if this commission can approve a zone change that preserves 30%, so double that. And on this development, Jason's going to run through his presentation, but what you can see is that this provides a nice opportunity to protect the area along the river and really give it a good amount of space, protect that water course, which actually is protected, town owns a lot of property on the east side of that river. And, and it, it, it is protected, it's open space along a good stretch bit. And this would add to that, giving some breadth to that water course, which, you know, given recent events, I think, I think it's only a good thing. The I don't want to step too much on Jason's presentation, but this, this piece and this proposal satisfy all the requirements of your RR districts. He's going to run through that. But again, this is a piece I think is nicely situated for the RR district. It's a continuation of what has just been south of it, but another thing that, that speaks to this piece, where actually I think the wetlands helps in this case, is that if you look at it, you can see over on the western side, Jason's going to point to it, there's a wetland there.
Can you repeat?
Thank you, sorry. In the words, uh, so one of the nice effects that has is it, it kind of acts as a buffer to what would be the balance of development. And I think you're going to see it as Jason goes through his presentation, where we'd be able to create lots along Monroe Turnpike, but they have more space and then have wetlands in the rear. And then those wetlands act to a buffer to the, to the back half, where the lots are more akin to the size and the orientation of those along Bird's Eye Road. Those lots, you see some of those lots down there go from 0.75 to 0.8 acres. And so in that area of lots that are being proposed won't kind of match the character, but at the front of Long Monroe Turnpike, it will more, it will more appear as you, as you see there at, you know, Long Monroe Turnpike now. So it kind of has two different characters, and the way the site is laid out works well. So with that, I'll turn it over, Jason, if you want to run through your presentation.
Sure, you did a lot of it for me, but.
Sorry.
Jason Edwards for the record, Jay Edwards Associates Engineers Surveyors. I apologize for not being there in person. I've got a illness going through my house that I didn't want to share with everyone. Um, I'll go ahead and pull up what, what was submitted. This was the, the Zone Boundary Change map that outlines the area that we are proposing to change. The green would be the farm that we just showed, you know, obviously this whole area here. There is an existing undeveloped lot here at the end of Bird's Eye that was subdivided back in, I think, 2007 or '08, that was cut off. The roadway was extended on paper here, but it never was, nothing was ever built. So that lot already exists and is a legal building lot. The, this parcel here is then, you know, the larger farm piece. And then also this parcel down here is also part of the application. That would be essentially additional open space that would be added to the RR open space. That would allow it to get to greater than the required 30%. Back to the maps. So as Chris said, the existing RR zone to the south. The way that this was designed, it appears as though it was, the thought was that eventually it would continue up into this piece. This, this right-of-way was left here and extended to here and, and left as it was, was to be continued, so to speak, with a larger piece being here. So in our opinion, we're here now to sort of continue that. This is a, a larger view of how this, this zone fits into the surrounding zones. The, the blue here is one of the conceptual layouts we put up, put forward on, on the RR zone. So you'd have, you know, your extension of a cul-de-sac here, as well as another cul-de-sac here. And Kathleen may want to speak to this a little bit too, but there is potentially a requirement to have a right-of-way that would have to connect out to Monroe Turnpike to satisfy some of the zoning requirements in regards to a number of lots on a dead-end street. So we would likely propose an emergency access drive out to Monroe Turnpike, so it would not be a closed, closed dead end. You'd have an outlet. The, the open space is shown here, the blue cross-hatched area is what would be become open space if this would be, you know, moved forward. Now, that does connect well with the existing town open space here, that's in green. There's a large corridor here that, well, shouldn't say all of it is. This part to the north is the, um, it's the Nunnery, I forget the name, Sisters of the Holy, something. I don't recall the name, but that, at some point, if it was to be developed, we would, you know, guess that there would be an open space section through here. And then this would be a key piece to connect that all the way down to, you know, the, the south here, I don't recall what road that is, that's I don't recall what that is right there, but it does give you the whole Voice Halfway River up to Legsore, potentially have an open space corridor that would go all the way through there. There is a hiking trail that goes through this area now, and it would provide for a more robust hiking trail through there. This is, was what was submitted for a layout for the RR zone, and that's why I highlighted the other option. This one did not show the emergency access drive out to Route 111. And I think Kathleen had issued some comments on that, and so, you know, we have the option of providing that emergency access or potentially just having two cul-de-sacs here with the, with the option to extend them later to the, the large piece to the north, if that was ever to be developed down the line. One of the other considerations of the RR zone is there's some language that speaks to the number of lots that are allowed in the RR relative to the number of lots that could be developed conventionally. So we, we just demonstrated on here what we can potentially get, you know, if we were to go in conventionally. Now, this would be an extension of Bird's Eye Road. I do have another layout that shows, you know, coming in from Route 111. If, if we were to have to do that, we could, and we could connect through here. But this shows a total of, I believe, 12 lots. So the, the relationship of conventional lots to RR lots, I think there's some questions on that that Kathleen and we, myself and Chris need to kind of hammer out. The language is a little bit blurry as to exactly how we calculate that, but there is a relationship there. And the other portion of what was submitted was just a narrative that sort of speaks to the same, same comments I just made. But it outlines how we, how this piece does conform with, with the requirements as they're identified in the zoning regulations. I, I don't think I need to read through each one of those, they're pretty self-explanatory. If there's any specific questions on those, I'm happy to answer them. And it's again, it's the same graphic that I had just shown you. And just one other point would be, the, the area is for, for Monroe anyway, has considerable number of, of higher density zoning already. You know, you've got the existing RR at Bird's Eye directed to the south. As Chris mentioned, you've got the, the two age-restricted condo projects here, High Meadow and the Ridge, farther to the south along Route 111. To the east, you've got a, I think this is, Britney Farms over here. This existing NFR district, and there's a couple other zones. RR zones that are not built out, that are down in the farther east. And then if you head farther to the north, you get into like Cotton Street Downs Road. Those are all, you know, one-acre lots, so they're, this, this would not be out of character for some of the developments in the area. I think that's about all that I had to touch on. If there's any questions or Chris, you want to hit on anything else?
Yeah, well, I just, I just want to go through some of the standards, say, Jason. Um, and Jason, if you can bring that open space map up again. So regarding your RR districts and some of the standards that, that are in it and how we feel we need it. The first is that an RR district shall be established only in an area where such districts will have no significant detriment impact on my RR. And one of the things, you know, I'm looking at this map, I, I think it's the exact opposite. Because again, you go traditional subdivision, it's only 15% open space required. But with an RR, it boosts that number up to 30%. On this, I believe that it gets it around almost 6 acres. And as you can see, that creates this tremendous opportunity to essentially fill in a gap here of open space and, and have the potential when that piece to the north is developed in the future, that you could possibly protect this waterway easily on both sides for a very significant portion of it. So, so again, this is something where we feel in the RR district, it's, it's, it's not detrimental, it's having a positive impact by protecting more open space. The next project is having water supply, there is, there is access to water to this site and being so located that it's served by present projected facilities. Again, water is, is already available for that site. There's, there's other, and these comments were made by Kathleen as well. You know, obviously, you know, we've had a number of these proposals come before us, and I'm sure the question is, you know, am I just going to keep coming back with, with more and more proposals? Yeah, I see some, some heads nodding. But what I will point out is that you have a cap built into your regulation that you put there about how many of these RR districts, how many units there would be. So if it's 3.62 point A, which says that not at any point in time shall the number of building lots in our RR district exceed 10% of the number of single-family dwellings. So you're still below that number with this project, we, you know, we're still in compliance with it, but you, you do have built in a, basically a quota that can't be exceeded for RR. And so we just feel we are, we are presenting this, this commission and the town with an opportunity for, to meet the housing demand, but in line still with what this commission had planned for, you know, through, through its, its regulations. These are going to be high-end homes that will help grow the ground list, but also, you know, with the, the tremendous housing demand that we've seen everywhere. And there, there is, there is some question, the, the, Jason brought this up regarding the density. It's, it's not the clearest regulation, but I can tell you that in the analysis that we've done about the number of lots that potentially be proposed in the RR district, we would be well below what would be the density permitted in an RR district, just based on the way the site's laid out, particularly the presence of wetlands and how that restricts how much you can actually develop this site. Again, we meet the minimum parcel size, 25 acres. This is not something, if you have a 10-acre piece or a 15-acre piece, it's really something that's reserved for these very large pieces that are in excess of 25 acres. We have the required frontage along the, along Monroe Turnpike. And all the lots proposed will meet the permitted lot size, the height standards in accordance with the character of the area, only two and a half stories and 35 feet in height. And I already talked about the open space requirements. So again, we feel this is a, a perfect piece for this RR district. It's already there to the south of it. It's basically designed for this RR district to continue. The road basically leads into this site for where we are proposing these, the bulk of these lots. Jason, can you go to the plan, the RR concept plan? The RF, not the RF2, the, the RR. And yeah, so, and I, I talked about this at the beginning. I think one of the nice ways this site lays out is if you look at the Monroe Turnpike side on a concept layout, we have, we have two houses. And the sizes there are in conformity with a lot of the lots that you see in that area of Monroe Turnpike. But then you could see the wetlands and kind of that underlay that's, that's, you know, that this put up, superposed on. You could see the wetlands areas, and then it creates that disrue before you get to these other lots, which again match the size and frankly exceed, particularly on the eastern side of this, these eastern lots here, exceed the size that you see on the existing lots on Bird's Eye Lane. That whole, that Bird's Eye Lane, where it says Bird's Eye Lane, that's all RR district. And, and so we're just looking to basically continue what, what almost looks like it's unfinished and, and bringing the RR district up there. But with that, we have any answer?
Thank you, returning your question. So just like the record showed, that Commissioner Lupo has joined us. Welcome to the party. And for the record, for all those here tonight, if the commission approves this Zone Boundary Change, we're not approving the development at all. All would develop, all were, if we approve it, the only question is changing the zone from the residential zone that is it now to the special zone.
There would have to be another hearing for any of the?
There will be another hearing, another application.
We would also have wetlands.
Any development, the, the wetlands hearings that would precede any actual development. Tonight is only changing the zone, so if the commissioners and the public have questions and comments, it's really just about changing the zone, not about putting houses in there. They may never put houses in there. They may come around and want to put an apartment building in there. We don't know, and we have no control over that at this meeting, not. So with that, we'll go to the commissioners. We'll start on my right with any questions?
Yeah, so just to clarify, so as it is now, how many building lots would? building lots, uh, would, would there be?
If we just did, if we just did like straight RF two.
Yeah, convention.
Uh, Jason, break me up on what it's, it's twelve is, is what we made out.
We have, one of the concept layouts gets it up to fifteen, I think. Um, so it's somewhere between twelve and fifteen, I would say.
And that would be with reduced open space, we'd bring it down from thirty to?
Yeah, it even go into a fee in lieu of open space would be the maximum, and we have no open space.
And each lot is about two acres?
Each lot would be about two acres. If we went conventional zoning, it would be two acres, yeah.
All right. And then for what you're proposing, how many lots would you have?
There's seventeen on the concept that you, that you have up there, Jason?
Well, there, again, there's multiple concepts, the, the maximum that we were getting in the concept was twenty. I think reality puts it around sixteen, seventeen, probably, something like that.
And just so you know, uh, and just so you know, Commissioner, there is, there is a, a requirement for lot size that you cannot go below three quarters of an acre. And there's also the odds to that with regards to how much of your lot can be underwater and how much of your lot can be wetlands, which for, for this particular property is one of the things that kind of controls how many lots you can have, you know, you, you can't do more just because of the, the physical restraints.
So basically, this would give you approximately six or so more building lots that would be smaller, but it would would provide more open space.
Right.
Yes. Considerably more open space.
That's, uh, that's all I have for now.
Um, for the RR, is there a fee in lieu of option for the open space?
No.
There's requirements, just, just, just to expand on that, there's also requirements about, uh, there's a percent that has to, there, there's a percent that's conveyed to the town, ten percent is conveyed, open space conveyed to the town. Um, and then there's also, uh, a lot of details about the open space, what can be there as far as recreational assets and those types of things.
Then, uh, per the regulation, after talking to Kathleen, it's gonna have to have the emergency. As of now, how it's written, if you were to put a subdivision here, either way, it would have to have the emergency access onto one eleven, but that would be blocked off with like a chain or something like we did at the other properties, so it's not going to be flowing traffic. It's gonna be there for emergency service vehicles if need be.
Correct.
That's all my questions for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a problem with changing the zone without seeing.
Sorry?
I have a problem with changing the zone without seeing basically a plan. You don't have a plan.
Well, we have a conceptual layout.
We've done that before. And the conceptual plans change all the time, so I'm not even changing the zone or a plan. I mean, this was something maybe you should have brought to the subcommittee.
We, we didn't, we didn't present it to, to somebody.
I was.
We did it twice, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see this. But maybe I did, but how many, how much wetlands do you have on this? It looks like that whole side there is, you couldn't develop that side if you wanted with open spaces, right?
Uh, you, we, we actually, I mean, it wouldn't be the ideal development place, no, but you, we could get driveways down there, we do have, we have done enough, um, you know, design, uh, to, to say that we could develop some of that. Um, you have to cross wetlands, we'd have to, you know, it would not be pretty, but, um, it's feasible.
Well, you have to cross wetlands because you have like, it looks like you have a stream running through there, no?
Yeah, yeah, you have to cross wetlands, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so.
There exists a driveway for the wetlands, so you know.
No, no, I, I understand that. I'm saying to you is that we're just increasing the density on this property. You know, you're not like, if it's a two acre zone, there's only so much you can do because you don't, you really can't develop it too much because you have too much wetland, just increasing the density.
But, but one thing I would say to that, Commissioner, is while you can't necessarily you couldn't put your house in the wetlands, you could still use the lot area towards your lot requirements. And so whereas in this case, that thirty percent is completely shut off from being used towards your lot.
Right, but see, the thing is, is like, when you increase the density, right, you don't, we don't know how many bedrooms, I mean, you can have up to three bedrooms on this, this property, right?
I don't think there's a limit.
There's no, I don't think there's a bedroom cap on your, on your right action.
There is no cap on it, right?
There's no cap on it.
And so, so you can put as many bedrooms as you want.
Well, the size of the house is not.
Okay, because, um, it's gonna be one acre.
Well, just to.
Be one acre because they're going.
What I, but what I'm saying is there's no, there's no requirement on the size of the house, so they can put twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred, we don't, we don't know.
Right, that's why I'm saying.
We, we have.
There's subsides, it's allowed to happen, in a two acre zone, exactly, but we increased density that you could have, because you're only a property, what do you say? Maybe twelve, thirteen houses.
Two acre.
Yeah, Jason, can you, can you throw that to me, uh? Yes, so.
Two acre you could get.
I don't know, Jason, if you can flip quick back to the, and just flip. Go, if you could go, okay, there, so you see the open space there. And then flip there, you can see those lots protrude closer towards the river and they utilize, um, you know, they utilize that area towards their lot area. So it moves that development towards their east.
Right. But the density is less density.
How many, how many lots are there?
Twelve, um, there is a conventional layout that goes to fifteen, I think.
You, we, we've shown a couple layouts, they've been twelve, fifteen years.
Fifteen, I asked, put in six.
I think, we, we, planning out, watching, doing all the engineering, everything, it's been sixteen to seventeen, probably.
So it's a little bit denser.
It's a little bit denser, it's a little bit denser. I will say, you know, as far as the size of the units, you do have, you have height limitations, um, the lots are about three fourths of an acre or higher. Um, and you, you have setbacks as well, um, thirty foot setbacks to, from the front lot line. And then, uh, fifteen feet from any side or rear lot line. I think that some of them also have an increased setback because it's still border the RF two on the northern side. Um, so those are, that's thirty foot setbacks, the RF.
How many total acres is it when you combine all these together?
The whole, the entire range?
Yeah.
Jason, these thirty-nine acres?
Uh, it's in that ballpark, yeah.
Thirty-nine. So you can increase the density, you can, you can get up more to twenty.
No, no, not with the topography, and I think we're limited, um, just with road frontage, you can't do rear lots in the RR, so we have to have all frontage lots, so, so there's some limiting factors there. I think honestly, we show twenty here, I think you probably lose two or three out of this and you'd be closer. We're probably talking maybe, maybe three to four lots different from conventional to, to RR. Now, I, I'm not guaranteeing that, but that's what I see by the time we're through wetlands and, and get that design hammered out with septic systems and everything, that's probably seventeen realistically more likely.
Because, if you look, Commissioner, if you look at this plan, one, you see, if we, if we're gonna have this requirement, plus we have on turnpike, along that northern, would be the northwestern corner there, we're probably gonna lose a lot over there, and then we also you know, we're trying to say is like the, especially the presence of wetlands.
We're still maybe a lot twenty.
Not just you.
Problem I have with it is changing the zone without seeing the plan. You understand what I'm saying to you?
The, the challenge with that, though, is.
It is, I, I understand the challenge, what you're saying.
Because we have to wear wetlands still.
No, and I have all that, I have all that, but I'm saying this was, was some kind of a plan or to, or to keep you on that kind of a plan. I have an issue with changing a zone to accommodate without a plan. I mean, we, years, I've been on here for eight years and we've never changed a zone without seeing some kind of a plan a long time ago. We've done it recently, not years ago, we never did it.
Can I, can I ask, with the site plan, what you would be looking to see?
I try to, because I would try to hold you to that plan, you understand what I'm saying to you, is like, you know, it, it, we've had this happen before, we've had it happen on, on another one up there, that where it went from two bedrooms and went to three bedrooms. It's like that, that changes, you know what I mean? This commission comes in front of this commission and everybody gives you this whole plan, telling you, oh, this is what's gonna be, this is what's gonna be, this is what's gonna be, and then all of a sudden it comes back and it changes. After we already approved, the, the zone change, so I just have an issue with that, I'm good.
Well, and, and, and I appreciate that, so I'm just trying to understand.
I'm just saying, I just, I, I know you.
Is it the bedroom count?
It's a bedroom count, it's, and, and plus what the, the runoff, not that we have to worry about what happened in this town, there's a bunch of stuff that we have to worry about. So that's where I'm at.
Good.
Okay. Commissioner, Miami.
Yeah. It's always a hard follow after Leon, I tell you that. Um, so, I'm a little torn. And, uh, I'll speak openly about this. I actually agree with both of you. Um, I agree with Leon, I think it is nice to have a plan, to kind of have an idea of what's going on. But I also understand your side of the game where, hey, we're here for a text amendment change, we're not here for a plan and the plan is coming, maybe. Maybe, I said, I said maybe. So a plan is coming, maybe, and, and once you get your zone changed, then you're gonna get, then that gives you the option for your plan. So I understand both sides of the argument. I guess why we were elected officials was to figure out which side of the argument we need to be on, right? Um, so again, being torn between the two, um, I don't hate the concept, right? I think it's nice that, to give that open space, because once it's given open space, it's done with forever. Um, here's where I have an issue. You tell me, you, you drop twenty-ish houses, whatever the number is, we don't need to be exact tonight. And then you're saying, well, we're gonna possibly lose here, we're possibly lose here, what if we possibly gain?
Under this.
Because we, because if we possibly lose, we possibly could gain two.
I think with the wetlands and the requirements for frontage, I would, I would say that's highly, highly unlikely. The commission would, I, I mean, right, Jay, Jason, the reason why you couldn't extend that further is you couldn't get the necessary frontages.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
And they're not.
Because I wanted to show you the worst case scenario, I mean, that was my intent on this, was to say, okay, this is the maximum we're gonna get here. Um, and then try to explain that, I, I know it's tough to, to totally, uh, you know, believe all that, I understand, but that, that was my, my thought process coming in here. And I know already that, you know, based on Kathleen's, um, latest letter, we're gonna lose one or two lots with having to extend the road right away for the emergency access. Um, so, you know, maybe what the thing to do is to, to come back with something that is, um, you know, to the next meeting with, with something that I can say, okay, this is, this is very close to what we would do, um, if that is what the commission wants to see. Um, you know, I can have something that I'm more firm with, if that helps.
So my question is, is your client that owns this property, is their intention to build or is their intention to get an approval and sell to build?
Build.
He's sitting there.
They're gonna build.
Answer that question, but I believe he's gonna build, yeah.
Okay.
Like, like, so if you look at, I think, I can't tell the, the numbers, Jason, but I think it's seven. Right, and it looks like, like, you know, seven there, it meets the frontage requirement, but I can also see the wetlands there, so I, I mean, you know, I think those are the areas, right, Jason, where you think there could be, uh, you know, the commission, the wetlands commission, the wetlands commission, to knock out a lot, lot or two.
We also have to fit septic systems on all of these lots, um, the soils are good in some areas, in other areas, they're not spectacular, so, you know, we, we have to to sort of iron out where our, our lots are going to be to, to accurately test the soils, so once we get going into septic testing and, and drainage now, we have to test for the drainage too, so, you know, there's a lot of
elements. But that's, that's not, that's not stuff, but again, that's not stuff we're overly concerned about tonight because we're not at that point.
No, we're not at that point, but that's.
We're nowhere near.
We're, we're, we would knock out lots, that's all.
We're nowhere near that.
No, we're not.
But I, I, and that's why I asked Commissioner Rosie this, is, is what are the concerns in what you're not seeing, and then maybe if we can look at it and see how we could address those.
So listen, at the end of the day, there's, there's always something hidden on this property, right? We don't, we don't, again, he says septic issues, there may be additional wetlands that, that weren't seen originally. There may be less wetlands that we thought were wetlands that are not wetlands, so I, I, again, like I said from the beginning, I understand both sides of, both sides of the aisle here. Um, and again, it's also our choice to figure out what, how we wanna go about it. Now, if the zone did change, if the zone changed, does the commission have regulation on the amount of houses that could be built, or is that?
There, there is a limitation on the number of lots, yes, but again, because of the, the physical conditions, I don't think we would get even close to what that calculation permits.
No, I'm talking about if you propose twenty and we say we want ten.
Um.
Does that regulation allow that?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it's it's under your, your special permits here, so yeah, I, I think, uh, but I, but yes, I, I, let me, let me look at that and.
You can get back to us on the next hearing? Because I'm assuming you're gonna keep this open, right?
I, I think we wanna keep it open, just to see if.
I think that'd be a great idea. All right, I'm all set, thank you so much.
Commissioner Weston.
And Chris, that's something that you and I can, can look at together. I, I don't necessarily think it, it becomes, it becomes a zone, just for the commissioners, it becomes the recreational residence zone, which means they then, in the same way, as of right, they can develop an RF two, a property in an RF two zone in a way that meets the regulations of the RF two zone. They, as a right, have the ability to develop in an RR zone, and there is density requirements for an RR zone, um, which shall not exceed one unit per net acre of the parcel if the parcel was conventionally subdivided. And as Jason was saying earlier, there's a little bit of what that interpretation of that language is. Um, I'm happy to look at past precedent to see what the town has done to make sure that we're interpreting it the same way that had been done in the past. Um, but it's not, it's, it, you can't use, it's not the same thing as like a special exception permit, where the commission has much more power to put specific conditions, um, on the approval. But we'll look into the details of that.
All right, well, I think that may have helped to answer my question because I was a little confused as far as presenting a plan as Commissioner Ambrosi asked for, whether or not that binds this approval in any way, shape or form.
This is just going change, I guess, yeah, yeah, so.
It doesn't.
You can't, you can't condition us.
I understand, to rephrase, but, but having a, a plan in front of us is nice to look at and we can imagine what it may be, but in no way, shape or form are we bound to that plan or to, you know, we're not discussing that in any way, so having the plan is nice, but it's, it's just, it's just that nice, it's not helping in any way, shape or form.
Right, I mean, what Jason's trying to show with this plan, though, is, is that per the standards you have in there, this is where we would max out.
Right.
Um, barring, I think, the wetlands commission and allowing us to fill wetlands, I, I mean, you know.
Hmm, so my, my thoughts on it are, and again, a little unclear, but, you know, I'd be definitely, uh, more open to this, you know, if it was an equal trade in densities for what is existing now. I think that would be fair, I, as Kathleen said, I don't know that that's possible to restrict that. With a, with a straight zone boundary change, you know, if there's a way to work that into it, that would seem to be a good compromise, as far as I'm concerned. Um, because I, I know that there's some, uh, uh, there's some, uh, level of, uh, discomfort here with the amount of density that we're adding by making this zone change. Um, now, having said that, I do also think there are some benefits, I mean, you know, there's, it's less impactful overall to the parcel, which is good. The, uh, more open space, doubling the open space is good. Um, and then the area to be developed has less topographical challenges, which leads to less land disturbance, it's also good. Um, and I do also agree that, you know, this is a, potentially a nice addition to an emerging section of town. Um, so I'm not saying I'm against it, but I would love to see some type of restrictive language, I don't know how that could be done as far as the density is concerned.
Leon, let me, let me talk to Kathleen about that, maybe we could, we can figure out, right?
Well, I assume if you keep the density the same, then there's no reason for the zone change on your end. Right? The reason you want the zone change is to be able to build more property.
Right.
And if we're not gonna let you build more property, then all their change, the only reason to change it would be to give the town more property, I don't see why that would.
Because they're building the property closer together and not on two acre zones.
But it would be the, but if it's the same number.
Oh, it's a whole lot easier to develop in a small area, especially on that parcel.
Maybe, I'm just, I just don't see them coming back and saying, okay, we'll keep it the same, because then then they're just agreeing to give us property.
Small lots.
For no reason, it's difficult to develop from the rest of that property.
Yeah, sure.
And it's, it's challenging. And maybe the number isn't twelve to twelve, whatever, but if it was some type of compromise. That's all.
Thank you.
Um, has any thought been given? I know we're not approving anything. If the soil testing, speaking to Jason's point, comes back in these areas where you think you're gonna put houses, comes back and you can't, is there any opportunity or chance you're gonna shift around what open space you're going to give us? And could this layout change then based on those tests?
Um, the, the open space, the amount of open space would be dictated by the, the regulations. But, uh, you know, we, we very well will, we will tweak the lot lines, you know, as needed to, to accommodate the soils. So I don't see a drastic change in, in open space, but we may have to shift, you know, a little bit here and there. Um, but I wouldn't think it's gonna be much different than what we're showing now.
But, and Commissioner, I just wanted to check this language because I, to make sure I remember it correctly. But where it talks about, it says such land shall locate by so in my opinion, you have, you have some discretion on it. If, if we augment it and it stills your satisfaction in permit, but if not, you can.
And I do apologize, I was a few minutes late. Can you just guide me to where Route 111 is, is up on the left?
Uh, Jason, you wanna go back to the area? Right, so there, right, yeah, that's Backburn Hill, that moves off west. So, yeah, so the west, west Backburn Hill that heads off west there, we're just north of that. Um, eastern end of the road, turnpike. And then you can see Bird's Eye Road, which is where I was indicating that the, uh, the RR district currently is.
And can you highlight for me, again, my apologies, towards the 111 area where the wetlands are? Where are we?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, you can see it pretty much there. There's a driveway, which these lines, yes, might be tough. But there is a driveway that exists there now.
And this question might be more for Kathleen. How close are we to the quota that Chris spoke about in terms of, was it high density housing, Chris, you mentioned, or was it?
No, the, it's the, the RR district itself says, for the purpose of providing a balance of the distribution of housing types, the number of building lots in an RR district. So it's specific to the number of building lots, RR district, shall not at any point in time exceed ten percent of the number of single family dwellings in the town.
Okay. So I think
And the percentage, I think, Kathleen is
We're around six, we're around like six percent right now, plus our, plus or minus, so we have plenty of room.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen. So the rest of my, I really don't have any more questions as I do comments. So I took a ride, attempted to take a ride down there after the flood of the thousand year flood, or whatever they're calling it. And, you know, I travel this road quite often, I have so for many, many, many years. And I've noticed as we've, you know, more and more high density housing has been put in. And I know that was something that was mentioned was that, you know, this is an area where there's a lot of high density, high density housing. It's, um, you pointed out the different housing areas. As it's gone in, 111 has gotten worse and worse with flooding. And my concern, and that's for wetlands to figure out, however, I just want to voice my concerns, is that we're now gonna build more houses on top of wetlands in an area that already suffers flooding during a normal rainstorm. And we're, now we're gonna build in an area that could put more water into the river, which obliterated the Stevenson section. So I'm just very sensitive and very aware to building anything on a wetlands, near wetlands. So I just wanted to add that to the conversation. I know that doesn't have anything to do with a zone change, but just my thoughts going forward, I'm very cautious of that, you know, based on recent events.
Well, and one of the nice things, and Jason might be able to speak to this better than I am, because it's an engineering, but, um, with your current standards, the MS4 standards, there is a requirement to retain your water and to reduce the rate that the water leaves. I mean, Jason, can you speak to that a little bit more about, from an engineering perspective, regarding MS4 that, you know, you're not necessarily increasing the rate because you have requirements with regards to the water that's on your property.
Uh, yeah, there's Jason Edward's record, yeah, they, um, there's even, the, the newest requirements were just went into effect, uh, first part of this year, I don't know if it was January or if it was March, but, um, those are even more, uh, you know, uh, aggressive, I guess you could say, in, um, in what they require, uh, basically anything, anything you create impervious wise, you have to account for, uh, and, and demonstrate that you're not increasing peak flows, peak, um, velocities, uh, you know, increase or decrease and basically try to keep everything the same, putting as much water in the ground as possible. So while I understand your concern, it, it's very important to remember that, that, that storm event was, as you said, a thousand plus year storm event. I think town engineer last week in Wetland said that it was more like a three thousand to five thousand year storm. Um, so while you can never say it's not gonna happen again, um, it, it's not something we can design to. Uh, so I do understand your concerns though, and I, I, um, I am confident that a- anything that we design, um, that's in accordance with the guidelines and reviewed by the town engineer and, and everyone else involved, um, would, would not contribute to, uh, a flooding problem. It'd be much better designed in that sense than anything built, you know, in the past. It's, it's gonna be better.
The problem is it didn't exist, you know, the MS4 didn't exist way back when and, and to, to, to stop the issues that we have today. And, and again, one of the, I think the nice things with the, the RR is we're gonna give the halfway river there a pretty wide berth, uh, and give that water course, uh, some space there. And obviously then therefore the houses would not be close to it. And hopefully we're not an issue.
Okay.
You're good. Okay, uh, Kathleen, are your staff concerns resolved through this evening?
Um, it's more of, you know, comments for the commission, uh, you know, like we've all talked about, this is really just a zone change. And there would be a subdivision application that would be proposed subsequent to this if a zone change, um, were approved. Um, like Attorney Russo had said, it does meet the general requirements, uh, parcel size, um, individual lot size, the open space requirements. Um, like it was already mentioned, we do have the availability. Um, we don't meet our, our ten percent for those building lots. So we have plenty of room or somewhere around six percent right now. Um, I had a couple of small minor items, um, that were just kind of housekeeping, um, for Jason. And then really it was, um, what we've kind of alluded to, but there is something in our subdivision regulations that mentions that the number of lots, um, that are served by cul-de-sac or dead end streets, um, which are closed at one end of the building lot, um, closed at one end by a building lot or a land ending in a turnaround, which may be temporary or permanent, shall provide sole access to not more than twelve building lots and not less than four lots. So basically, when you come off to that cul-de-sac, you cannot sort because this isn't a through road, they are looking to maybe put the fire access road to meet that conditions. I don't know. I don't know if that's acceptable. Um, I did pull a couple, um, example projects that this commission has approved subsequent to that zoning regulation being approved. I was looking at it mostly just as the interpretation to make sure it wasn't like any road off of like a main road could only be twelve lots because obviously this wouldn't be a viable concept if that was the consideration. I did not look at it as it relates to accessways. So let me pull those projects again and take a quick look at that. That's not something that this commission needs to understand right now. It would just be something that we need to know, uh, prior to the approval of the subdivision. But I did want to make sure that the concept plan that they approved was within range. Even if that condition does get really strict, I think they lose a lot or two. Um, depending on how we'd really interpret that number, it's, it's not a significant, significant amount. It's not like they go down from twenty to fifteen. I think they would go down from like twenty to seventeen or eighteen. Um, so that was just something for them and for us to take in consideration. And then just as the commission already knows, this does require, this does allow them to build more lots as of right. Um, which I think we've talked about this enough and we'll go and look into the exact language of that and what the ability of the commission has to put in as conditions of the approval. Um, but in theory, the concept of the regulations is to allow for recreational areas. So it's not actually a zoning district that is trying to endorse the preservation of open space. Although that can happen as part of it, it's actually to create recreational passive and active opportunities for communities. So as part of this zone, you can create a clubhouse, you can create a golf course, you can create, you know, other things. It's actually recreational residence, it's the recreational part. You can also create passive recreation, which is sound like, at the moment, that's the intent of what they plan to do. Um, but I just want to bring it to the commission that in theory, um, they can come in and a clubhouse is an approved accessory use. Um, a golf course is technically approved accessory use. You know, they would have to have the space and wetlands and things of that nature. But the intent of this zone district is to allow for recreation to be part of the community.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll go to public participation next. Now, there are a couple of rules for public participation. Um, the people that you've already heard know the rules, so I'm just gonna let you guys know the rules. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please don't repeat comments that have been made before. I mean, if you agree with someone, you could say you agree with them, but please don't go down a list. During public participation, you, the public ought to, um, address us, the commission, not the applicant. Please don't even look at the applicants. Don't ask the applicants questions. Uh, you can talk to us, that's what this is about. All right, so if there are any members here tonight in the audience, we'll go to the audience, live audience first, just raise your hand. Okay, when you come up, come on up, um, to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the rec.
And if you could please sign in as well.
And thank you, before you leave signing.
Commissioner Chris Krass, 29 Birds Eye Road. So a couple of things that I would, you know, point out that, you know, as a neighboring to this property would be, uh, first, from RF2 to RR, so as we've talked about, there's gonna be more, uh, more lots. More lots means more impervious surface, more impervious surface means less ability for water drain. I know inland wetlands take that up. Hopefully you drove up there during the flood. If not, I was there during the flood. Um, I pumped nearly twenty-five thousand gallons of water up my patio in about six hours. And there was a waterfall coming up that cul-de-sac above this property, throwing sixty-eight inch rocks all over the river. That property is significantly wet and does not drain well. Uh, there is water all over that existing neighborhood up there.
The, the second piece I'd like to address, um, once again, probably more in the, the subdivision, uh, public hearing, but is that emergency egress road for the, the cul-de-sacs? I'm also an emergency responder in the town, I understand the need for that emergency egress road. I don't want it to see just to be a chained off road. I think this road should actually, if it's going to, continue as a floor route out to 111. Egress roads in this town are not well maintained, they're chained off, they're not maintained in the winter, they're smaller. In addition, this whole development was nearly, the existing development was nearly cut off during that flood. The boys halfway river goes underneath Trailside, uh, Drive, and that was completely flooded over, more than ten inches of water. The boys halfway river is essentially, it circulates this whole property. It actually goes, it will go underneath that other egress road. And I think those are the things that you'll need to consider if you're thinking about these changes. When the zone changed, my biggest concern is higher density. There's gonna have more impervious surface, and this is an extremely wet property that everyone in the existing neighborhood deals with every day. Um, tons and tons of water. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, anyone else? Come right up. Just name and address, please.
My name is Paul Stravsky. I live at seventy-five Trailside Drive. I almost didn't come tonight because I was told it was just gonna be the zoning change from one to another. But in sitting there, I see all these maps. And I moved into that neighborhood for one specific purpose. It's a neighborhood. And everyone in that neighborhood gets along. We have little block parties and it has that nice community feel. And what concerns me is when you start adding a lot of property, uh, building up down the road, that kind of changes the nature of it. And anything that ends up being a cut through to one eleven, I'm totally against. I like the fact that anyone coming in is coming in for the neighborhood, it's not a cut through. So I hope you take that into consideration later when they come back with their plan. And I can tell you, my backyard was a flood. My drains in the yard could not keep up with the water. Now, again, that's the one in a thousand year rainstorm. But every time there's a heavy rainstorm, I have little pond in my backyard. If you go up on Trailside Drive, there's all these drains along the street where underneath you have the water flowing, they flow constantly. And it is a pretty strong current coming in. So anything that adds more water concerns me. So just something to take into consideration when you're looking at changing something that allows them potentially in a future plan to have a lot more houses. So that's my concerns. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Stephen, Charlie, thirty-five Birds Eye Road. So I actually almost bought the exact property that's gonna be going up that extra lot that wasn't there. Me and my neighbor, we share a decent driveway. Um, but for a couple of things is just from, I'm talking about the, the water standpoint, it is super wet. So, so much so that after a regular rainstorm, water will pump through a driveway for the next twenty-four hours. Like it just leaked from there and go through across it. So I, I know that it is definitely a wet area up there. Um, in terms of the housing, I think you guys are at twenty, they were at twenty houses. Maybe it's down to eighteen without the, the zoning piece, they were at twelve to fifteen, seems kind of it's not, not really a difference. So I feel like, uh, if they could keep the, you know, keep the zone as is, they're still gonna put houses there, I understand that. I don't know if there's a concept, one of the concern questions I had, and I can ask that, but is there a concept that doesn't connect to one of them? We've had, you know, even in our neighborhood, as far in as we are, there's still been crime. And when you add two exits and entries, uh, it's gonna, could potentially increase that. So I don't know if there's a way to just keep, they have one road, it's a whole new sub development on their own without having to connect it through Birds Eye. Um, that was one of the questions that I would have been asking. Is it priority preservation land? I don't know if that's been looked into. I know they, it's on them to do that, they just check the box, no, has that been technically looked at? I know those things can change. So that's one of the questions I would have had. And, um, from an MS4 issue, they talked about that, uh, how that's a new standard. All I know is when I leave Trailside, there is a development being built directly across the street that I would assume has to abide by MS4. And in any rainstorm, there is a river of water coming off of that thing. Mud, there is, literally, that's what, one of the reasons I couldn't get home during that rainstorm is because of the amount of water that was coming out of that. And that's a brand new development. So the hesitation there is if this holding happens again, or even a significant rainstorm happens, and MS4 doesn't seem like it worked for that development, so I'm hesitant for this one. So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your comments. So anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on the record?
My name is John Chauvin, I own, uh, twenty-one Backburn Road and twenty-seven Backburn Road. I just moved here about a year ago, uh, for space. And, and it seems like they're building two, they just built the house next door to me and they're building another house behind me. They just put up the ridge, that other down Monroe Turnpike, right when I moved in, they started building that. And there's the other community right next to it. It seems like putting another bunch of housing right next to it is strangling the air. It seems like everyone wants to develop like right on that corner. And I, I just don't see another even seventeen rooms, it's already crowded. Like it's, it's very upsetting, I want space, I want quiet, I don't want, you know, a hundred people, you know, building right there. And, you know, it, it concerns me. I'm, I'm, I'm with Liam, there's no plan here. You know, oh, we're gonna put twenty house, no, we're gonna put seventeen house. You want it next year, some houses and you do the land samples? Who knows, now they're gonna put a park to build. I mean, just because they can't build, I don't understand how they can, why, why would they want to go for a zone change before doing land samples? To know what they can build before they build. If you don't know what you can build on the lot, you have an idea, but if they didn't even do ground samples, then it's all gonna change, you know, that's done. And that's gonna be their excuse to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application?
Kathy Desmond, sixteen, Bagburn, Silver Road. So we are directly, Bagburn one eleven on the point. So that property is directly on the backside of my property. So I agree with John. We moved to Monroe because it's a beautiful town and we like the open spaces. And even though the traffic is horrendous, we still love it. And the other problem really was, um, the flood. Uh, which, once again, yes, once in a lifetime, but the bottom of Bagburn Road washed out, old Zora Road washed out, one eleven washed out. So I agree with John. We'd like to leave Monroe as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here tonight? Uh, is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. One more time, anyone here tonight? Uh, if not, then we'll go back to the applicant.
Sure, I'll be brief because we're gonna continue over. And I think you're starting to think slightly, yeah, access, the initial access, I think. We'll talk staff and we'll have, we'll have more, more like details on that. Um, I did, I did just want to address just a couple of points, uh, so they're fresh. Wanted to make clear, the RR are only allowed single family. So part of things like that, it does, that duplexes, that's not permitted in that. So we could only come and propose single family. We're essentially just looking to do what Birds I Wrote has right now, which is great. We're looking to extend it for a route, but hopefully there's more people for the block party to bring back growing salad here. So I'm sure they will love to, to join into that. And, um, I did check, I'm sorry, I have a lot of regulations in my head, uh, but the, the application would require special exception. So it's not just straight subdivision. And left submission is also special exception permit, which you have more discretion over. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clarification. And one thing too, and, and again, this, I, I think this goes to Commissioner Brozey, what you're talking about with, there's more units here, you're gonna trade off and give you open space. One thing I say is to, I know we've had this conversation a lot, uh, about the developments that have come before you and Commissioner Westland, you brought up this point too about, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future or with a future different commission and how they might handle housing. One of the nice things I think about this regulation is it's taking thirty percent off the table. That's getting restricted as open space forever. It will still be there afterward. And so as there's still a need for housing in the future, if a future commission decided, well, now you can get more density, uh, here, you can know that you've protected thirty percent of this. It cannot be used in the future. So I, I think that extra fifteen percent does have benefit. Um, and, uh, and with that, I think I'll, I'll, I'll reserve that. It's just for, for, for the next.
Okay, we'll keep this hearing open until, um, our next meeting on September the nineteenth. Uh, we're gonna go, uh, back to the first listed public hearing, RE eight twenty-four, the show one, so we'll wait later. Which, um, is a continuation from seven eighteen twenty-four. This is a regulation amendment.
Whoa. Um. Where's this guy been?
Um, you have new exhibits, Tom?
Kevin to the computer and everyone leave.
Yes, we have one exhibit, the revised text, uh, dated eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-four by solely engineering.
People getting off line too.
Can we read them?
Yeah. Since they're leaving, why am I not leaving?
Hey, it's all yours, Mr. Solly.
Won't take it personally. It's good to see everyone. For the record, my name is Kevin Solly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of.
I'd have to just, like a bike or just. You need the screen shared or something?
Uh, I, I will, yes. Uh, for the record, my name is Kevin Solly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with solely engineering. Office is located at five Main Street or here in Monroe. So we're here tonight for a proposed regulation amendment to section six point four, uh, the excavation and filling regulations in the town of Monroe. Um, this commission may remember, um, this, this application was, uh, appearing for the position at the firm in July. And we continued the hearing as we were working diligently with staff. And just to kind of refresh everyone's recollection, um, the impetus for this proposed regulation and the changes is basically because there are no provisions to be sustained, exclamation, fill regulations are determined to be illegal. Um, by, uh, through a court action against an application that this commission approved. So just to remind everyone, um, the, the current excavation and filling regulations have a provision in there where the commission can waive certain conditions that are attached to these types of regulations. Um, this has been in the regs for a long time. However, there are some recent court decisions which basically determine that any zoning commissions don't have the approval to bring waivers and that power is only, um, uh, given to zoning courts of appeals through state statutes. So while this commission has, has reviewed many applications through, you know, the regulations that existed. Um, essentially all of those rules were, were, um, susceptible to being overturned in the courts if they were so appealed by any opposition or anything like that. So, um, this, this came to light, uh, when this commission approved the next excavation to the apartment, um, at sixty-four Cambridge Drive. You may remember there was a butter who was, who was opposed to that. He appealed that decision. And the judge ultimately found that the provisions regulations was, um, not legal based on state statutes. Um, so this application is really one to kind of fix something, fix a deficiency in the current regulations. We had actually filed a regulation amendment, um, quite some time ago and we withdrew that because at the time, the commission had expressed some concerns about making sure that we weren't simply removing components that, um, you know, were problematic, but we were really kind of understanding, studying how the surrounding communities do things. Um, so what we did is we withdrew, um, we then, um, did that analysis, we resubmitted. And over the last few months, we've actually been working very diligently with staff. Um, both the town engineer and the town planner. And actually what we have before you here is something that we think that we believe really addresses the, the issues, the deficiencies in the current regs. Um, and while, um, you know, there were a number of other changes that were, that we'll run through. Um, they were all really to kind of, to, um, uh, reform the overall section to make sure that we can move things to the appropriate sections, provide, um, you know, guidelines rather than conditions. And I think that, um, you know, through the diligent effort of, of both Kathleen and James, I think we have a very good proposal for you that will really, you know, eliminate the, the susceptibility for appeals for any projects moving forward. Um, so with that, um, you know, in, in your packet, you should have the current revised language. And just for clarity, I did provide some highlights, um, on what was changed. And, you know, while there are a lot in the overall section, the majority of which were really just kind of, um, you know, fixing some language that was probably old and, and a little antiquated and also reorganize, reorganizing some sections to really address some of the concerns from staff, both engineering and language. Um, so we provided some clarity in six point four point one C regarding, um, you know, whether or not a, a normal site plan application has to comply with these regulations, um, in six point.
So, excuse me, did I get some highlighted in yellow? I, I understand what the, uh, crossing out means.
So what we, what we did is just for clarity, we just highlighted in yellow, anything that was being modified. So, so the commission can see. That was really just for the presentation.
So you're, you're modifying.
We're, oh, the only, the only change is, so the only changes are what's either bold or struck through.
So it's only the bolds and the struck.
Correct. We were just highlighting to kind of highlight the portions that, okay, just for presentation. Um, so providing some clarity for C regarding the site development plan. Um, or a site plan for improvements on residential property, which may be approved administratively by staff, be it zoning compliance, such as the K. Basically, um, you know, uh, when anyone proposes to change a contour, if you wanted to make sure there was a provision for this commission for staff, make sure they're reviewing and they were able to hold them, any of those applications to this, to this type, these, these requirements. Um, six point four point one D, um, uh, you know, we just tried to clarify some of that language. The commission can bring extensions, not going to see an additional five years per grand total of ten years. And upon determination, if the project is moving forward, compliance with this condition of approval. Just some clarity on some language that was previously there. Um, six point four point two, um, these were the killing exemptions. And, uh, this is actually, um, it's highlighted because we were kind of, uh, reorganizing some of those sections. Um, so this was actually moved from six point four point one five. Um, so it was previously in another section of the regs. We wanted to bring it to the front to make sure it was clear, uh, uh, you know, those requirements. We also added C, changes in accordance with the site plan for residential property by the planning department has obtained its buyer's certificate. So again, these regulations also apply to residential homeowner, um, where there are some exemptions regarding small quantities. But if someone's doing something on their residential property that may not need a approval from this commission, we wanted to make sure that the, the staff has an ability to apply these regulations to those types of projects. Um, six point four.
I have a question.
Yes.
It says five hundred cubic yards. As I understand for, um, of earth material, a change of contour or elevation of three?
There's one question, three what?
Sure. So three feet. So if, if I, in this guy, this is one of the exemptions.
It doesn't say that though. It doesn't say feet, can't.
It just says three. There's no, there's no foot sign next to it.
That is a, that is a great, uh, catch. And we pull our office and we staff, uh, miss staff, so we can certainly add, uh, feet. After both the word three and the number three.
We are reading them.
Yes, that's good. Um, so then, once we put in those exemptions, we read numbers, some of the other ones, six point four two became six point three, six point four three, six point four, and that regards to the level of approvals. And that, you know, is also true of the requirements. We, we clarified some of the procedural components, six point four point five now. Um, applications to permits to fill should be accompanied by copies of any necessary state permits required pursuant to public act seven two one five. Permit is there two, the application should be accompanied by a B and your compliance with guidelines specified in six point four point nine. So we, so we kind of clarified that, moved some words around and made sure it was very clear on what's required as part of these applications. Um, and then the rest of these conditions, um, basically they're saying what needs to be included in the narrative so that the commission has the full information regarding the application when they review it. And when the process will do this, through a, through a, from, from the process.
So on T, an, an engineering quarter should buy a professional Joe's license, facts instead of connect it. Sitting there, artificial lake of pond has sufficient water to float. Any newly created artificial lake of pond? Or that pertain to it from the existing?
Well, so, so that's actually the language that was already in the regulation. It's highlighted in bold because we simply fit from one section to.
Alright, so you're just moving it because it's the all of it also.
Right. Um, so RSP, uh, you know, provider regulations. And again, a lot of those components were already in other sections of the regs. It was really just more organization to establish those with. We also added the last implant requirements is something that this commission has looked at on other applications and wants to make sure it's. Um, and that actually comes from, it struck out six, the old six point four point six, because we put a number of those conditions into that as an exception that we just. That's happening. You can see those are struck in the line for this. Um, we went through six point four point seven, uh, the requirements for the approval. And then, uh, six point four point nine was conditions of exclamation, filling, upgrading operations. And this was the main impetus of what we needed to change because this is the one that said, any permit is subject to these conditions. But the commission can waive those requirements. That's actually legal by the court decision. So what we did is working with staff, um, wanted to make these guidelines, resident conditions. And we provided, uh, much more meat from a language standpoint, so that any action that the commission may, may decide on future, future applications will actually be, you know, it's consistent with other, with state statutes. And we wouldn't, we don't believe it would be viewed as, as illegal or, or against the statutes. Um, and then, so we kind of put that, holes through that language in here. And then we added, worked diligently with town engineer and made sure that we incorporate all of his concerns and comments regarding, you know, some of the protections that we want to have in place when, you know, we're grading in the, you know, a, a joke that's close to an adjoining property, but we don't want necessarily leave a, a, a peek at a property for no reason. It allows us and gives us flexibility to look at grading, you know, across properties and things like that. Um, we also took some language like F, this example is actually, um, some language, I believe, from the Oxford, town of Oxford zoning regulations, which talks about rather than, there used to be, um, blanket restrictions on grading within property lines or rights and ways. We actually use that, you know, incorporate some language from other regulations so that, you know, we're not gonna, if, if the topography raises up from a, from a right of way, um, we wouldn't want to leave a hill and then to just lower that grade. Once we hit that, the old setback that was required, we wanted to actually do something that was more, um, you know, reasonable and, and appropriate through the condition. So we, we established this language, um, as part of our work with, with staff. Um, and then we modify Q just regarding some language regarding some false site locations. Because again, if someone's proposing to fill, they're gonna have to import material and that can't be something that will be waived because that was more, um, you know, a lot of, uh, from the statute standpoint. Six point four point nine, again, it's like the guidelines, uh, we put in some provisions there regarding the timing associated with, uh, planning, um, properties. And then the language for the pond is this. And then we put in some language regarding the duration renewal and revocation of, of permit. And we specifically identified some of those, some of those conditions, G O and P from six point four point nine P, um, which are ones that were very important to staff to make sure those were addressed. Um, and then essentially we really just kind of, these are components of the regs that we've moved to other sections. But obviously it looks, it does seem like there is a lot of modification, but it really was just part of the reorganization of the regulations. Once we created the requirements, conditions that we wanted. Um, then we eliminated this point four point two waiver provision again, as that was deemed to be, um, outside of state statutes. Um, and then I just have a quick summary of kind of what our objectives were when we started this. So we wanted to remove waiver provision. The regulations that we have here eliminate that. We can, we can find to address staff's concerns. Um, we wanted to make sure that we were still exempting single family lots, site development plan applications and special exception applications. This was actually a provision of the regs where even though someone comes in with a site plan or a special exception and proposes changing contours, the current language actually requires them to still comply with all of these conditions. We've been able to clarify that and, um, make sure that wasn't, is no longer the case. Um, exclamation, fill permit strictly for grading, required activities to prepare sites for future development. We know that's something that happens. It's happened this time before and it's happened successfully in some, in some cases. So we still want to make that something that can happen. Um, and then we reviewed the regulations from adjoining communities in town, Oxford, Trumbull and Shelton. We took a lot of those provisions to make sure we were being consistent and providing the protections that, that the town needs to, um, to successfully process these types of applications. And lastly, we wanted to make them guidelines versus conditions. So it's more in line with the regulations. And it really gives this commission the most control and authority as, as applications to review, um, and come before you. So, uh, you know, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Um, I'm sure, and I know Kathleen is on, I'm sure she'll offer some commentary. But I think what we've developed, um, is really, it's really been a really joint effort. And we appreciate staff's, you know, willingness to work with us to make something that really addresses some of the deficiencies that were there. And we're just in a good position to be successful moving forward.
So, thank you. Just to reiterate what Kevin said, we did work with him. Kathleen and James did sit down on sev- many occasions with, uh, um, Kevin's staff to go over this. And, um, I know those of you that have been to a couple of the subcommittee meetings know that we did go over the regulations from adjoining communities. There's a lot of work that's been put into this. I'm not quite sure if it's finished yet. So let's just hear from Kathleen before we go with any other questions.
I'm mute, Kathleen.
Sorry, thank you. So fundamentally, staff doesn't have any other.
Sorry, thank you. So fundamentally, staff doesn't have any other comments, staff being James or myself. Um, the applicant has satisfied all of our requests, um, which as was mentioned, did include a bunch of rearranging. So we really just appreciate there was some just big cleanup as part of this that, uh, we both feel really good about. Um, technically according to the regulations, the conservation commission has to, uh, they have to be referred the application. Um, that was made to them. However, they canceled their meeting in August and their September meeting isn't until next month. Um, it isn't until next week. Uh, so we do anticipate something coming from them next week. So although we fundamentally don't have an issue with closing the hearing tonight, I think we do need to keep it open for just two more weeks, just so that um, per our regulations, we're complying with, um, all of our own standards. And we have to, uh, get their referral. The other item is, is this has been referred to legal. Um, however, I have not gotten legal's final, um, blessing on it. Um, they have been sent it. I haven't gotten any comments back kind of either way. Um, so I'm happy to follow up, um, with legal one more time, um, to see if we can get any, any more comments. The only real concern I have that I really wanted to get, um, the attorney's eyes on, which I have highlighted for him, is how we adjusted the language for six nine four, which were the guidelines of excavation or filling and grading. So fundamentally, the way it was worded before was that as part of the excavation and fill permit, the following conditions were required except as waived by the commission. And that is, that is the line of which became problematic in past applications. The way we've changed it is we've talked about the following guidelines shall be considered by the commission. Um, the commission may however, condition the application to protect or promote public health, safety or welfare, property values, the environment, sound planning and zoning principles, improved land use, site planning and land development, or to achieve a better overall neighborhood compatibility. When remove, reviewing the application, the commission shall consider existing site features such as topography, elevation of the property compared to surrounding properties, drainage pattern, size, shape of the property, property ownership and other restrictions such as wetlands and safety concerns. When considering recommendations. And then it basically goes through the rec, the, the conditions that were originally put in there, uh, plus a couple, um, additional items and revisions from staff. So the way that we plan, the way that this commission then has to approach applications coming in is we're basically giving them the list of guidelines that we are giving them, basically giving them the applicant, we're giving the applicant a heads up that this is what we're going to be looking for. However, it may mean that we need to condition each approval for these items that are coming in. One way that we have countered act that is we've told, uh, the applicant that they have to provide a narrative. And the narrative has to go each one of those conditions so that they have the opportunity to say why they have or have not complied with it. And then that will help me write the approval resolution to make sure that I'm putting in the conditions that we are making them comply with or not making them comply with. So as compared to this just being guidelines of which there's no real solid way to enforce it. Uh, we're asking the applicant to go through each one of the guidelines to talk about how they will or will not meet with them. And then we can condition our approval, uh, to make sure that, uh, if we feel that we need to do it for more of, um, enforcement issues, it will give our zoning enforcement officer, um, a little more backup if they don't meet specific conditions and an outline of exactly what will be done as part of the approval. So we believe that's the best way to move forward. We've kind of gone around in circles with that item. Um, on what's the best way to do it in a legal way, but also give the applicant a heads up of what we will be looking for. Um, my only concern is I, that's the one area for legal that I just wanted to make sure they didn't have any issues with it. I don't think they will. Um, but based on what's happened in the past, um, it was referred to them for their comment.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Uh, yeah, so this section really gives us a blank check to deny any application we want, basically, uh, any of these, uh, because of any of these conditions. So let's start with questions, Tom. The commissioners? We'll start on my right.
No questions for me.
Uh, no questions.
I just had on D, on this, uh, about section, section D on six point four one. The first one you're at. After five years, you're saying that you want to get rid of that. You don't have to comply to the current regulations. If we extend it.
So that's, that's the subdivision. That's just for the subdivision road. That was something this commission already approved in the past. It was just put in the regulations in the wrong location. So this was just fixing actually an old approval that the commission had. So it's basic, it's just for necessary excavation grading for a subdivision road. The commission may grant extensions not to exceed an additional five years.
Okay. And then, um, you Xed out six point two, three, five year completion requirement.
Yeah, again, that was the old, you're still talking about D?
Yes, I didn't hear someone else. Let's see that.
No, so this is just for the subdivision for the actual approval. It's ten years, uh, but it has to be revised every two years.
Yeah, it's here.
Which section are you referring to, Commissioner?
The last one of that's about, I don't know. Six point four two three.
Oh, exactly. So that is where it was put in.
Before.
Yeah. It was put in. It was put in incorrectly at the end. Now it's been put in the original location. The, um, yeah, the approval, the approval that was done, it, it was just put in there incorrectly. I had to go back and listen to the old meeting minutes and then I was able to, to put it in at its correct location.
But, but you also for six point four point two three and six point four point two, both of them. A lot of it was reorganized. It's more on the front. So it was more Claire from, uh, I just, I mean, I just have to read this. I all right, that's all.
Question my name?
No questions.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Okay, well, it's good to you too.
So it's unfortunate to ask this, Kevin, but we are going to ask for another session for two weeks to get the conservation commission and legal. So this will be continued until the nineteenth. We will need a letter from your office. So I can, I'm reach out to Mary and get that, uh, if you guys are amenable to that.
Yeah, of course. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're very excited that we actually got to the place where we are, you know, and I think this is, you know, all this, while this application was made by one of our clients, this is something that affects every applicant who comes before the town in a row. Um, and you're really appreciative of Kathleen's efforts and actually helping us to refine the definition. We will happily bring that essentially, Kathleen, we will issue a letter tomorrow.
Thank you.
See you down on the nineteenth.
Do we have any, is the public, uh, it's a public hearing. So if there are any members of the public here tonight or online that would like to comment, please raise your hand. I need to go back to the Tom, can we go back to the, uh, group view or whatever it's called? Anyone there other than Kathleen? Here we go. Any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll continue this application, uh, for two weeks. Thank you, Mr. Soli.
You say it. Well done.
All right. Uh, we have site development plan, uh, S U B twenty twenty four dash oh four, uh, three fifty nine Springfield Road. Um, y'all have before you a draft approval. Which the authorize at our last meeting. Are there any new exhibits?
Since the last meeting, yes, we have a new exhibit six. Uh, description, bond estimate received eight seven twenty four from civil one.
And for the applicant?
In the other word, I have an applicant, my name is Chris Blaskin, licensed civil. Civil one, uh, here to talk about, uh, Spring Hill Estates. Then before you a couple of times now, I think last time, the only thing we were waiting for was the town to review the appraisal and to, uh, issue a draft approval letter. A town engineer has also issued his bond recommendation, which we agree with. Um, so at this time, we didn't make any substantial changes to the plan. That would fold them up if you'd like to see them. I haven't been answering any questions. Um, at this point, I think we, uh, are clear with this application. I think, uh, both comfortable with where we're at and happy to, uh, build the houses in the future here, so.
Okay, before, um, make a motion like Kathleen to roll the highlights. Or Thomas, whoever's prepared for that.
Am I, let me, uh, I'm good. I thought I was muted. Uh, yes, so you have a draft subdivision approval. So technically there needs to be two votes tonight. The first vote has to be the acceptance of the appraisal. Cause technically that needs to be approved by the commission. So that has to be the first vote. And then the second vote would be the acceptance of the subdivision, um, as drafted per the resolution. So, uh, as we had, uh, there are four lots. Um, one, two, and three are conventional lots that are one acre. Lot four is an interior lot at one point three four acres. And then the open space is a payment in lieu of, um, the amount was market value for the property was $400,000. So the payment in lieu amount is 10%. Um, which would be $40,000. Um, the conditions of the approval, um, is really just that all lots shall be referred to as lots one, two, three, and four. Um, all mentions of lot A, B, C, and D shall be removed. There was some conflict in the plans. All lots shall require an engineered site plan to be reviewed and approved by the health department, zoning enforcement officer and town engineer prior to the issuance of a building permit. Additional test holes as required by the health department are required on lots two and three prior to the application of the building permit. Uh, a payment in the amount of $400,000 into the open space and land acquisition fund prior to the recording of the record map and the posting of a bond in the amount of $28,000, which was the recommendation of the town engineer. Um, there is, I did not draft this into it, but if you look in our regulations, um, there are two ways for them to, um, do the, um, open space fee. One is to do it as a lump sum prior to breaking ground, uh, for whatever the first lot is they plan to do. And the other one is there's a way for them to break it up, um, per each individual lot. This commission has in the past, um, required it to be one lump sum. I did not put that, um, in this approval. Uh, the, unless for some reason the commission feels like that would be appropriate. Um, I didn't feel like it was necessarily required. And so at the moment I've just made it, uh, per our regulations, which gives both those options.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. So for those of you that, uh, did not attend the, uh, subcommittee meeting, this applicant came to us with several other plans, um, for a more dense project. We basically told him just put houses in and that's exactly what he did. So I'll chill. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Okay. Great. Which way are you going to do the bond?
Yeah, I just have one quick point of clarity. Kathleen, I believe you said it was $400,000 B. It's 10% of that to be $40,000. So I just want to make that clear. It is written right in the approval, but I just want to make that part of the record. And then
What's a, what's the fact? You're 10 among friends, you know?
Nothing. All right. Thank you for your help, by the way, I'm just, and
You should have took the thirty, dude.
And then, uh, we are going to pay it as one right up in front.
Okay. All right. Wow. Any other questions? All right. It's not then, uh, Cheryl, except a, uh, not a motion for the acceptance of the appraisal, which you should all have in front of you.
I'll make a motion to accept the appraisal as, uh, appraised.
As drafted.
I don't think it's a draft.
It's a draft. Right in front of you. I'll second that appraisal draft thing.
So motion by Condon. Second, my E need, um, will call the votes standing on my right. I think it's the five.
Yeah, yeah.
Close up.
Uh, Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Rainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, the appraisal is accepted. Cheryl, I intend a motion to, um, approve this draft subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve subdivision S U B twenty twenty four oh four file one two seven seven as drafted.
Second from Ambrosi.
Motion by Condon, second by Ambrosi, uh, will call the votes standing on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Rainey, yes.
You should just say no, just because.
I thought it was, I thought you were second.
All right, then the, uh, subdivision, subdivision has been approved.
You saw what you're talking about.
Congratulations. Your first approval, Chris.
Thanks for sticking it out.
You're checking out, cleaned the lot, so.
It does. It looks nice.
Looks really good.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
They took the, uh, they took the garage down at, uh, Ally's also.
We have pending minute, meeting minutes eight one twenty four.
Make a motion to approve eight one twenty four minutes as drafted.
Okay, motion by Condon.
Westland, yes, second.
Second by mine, they all. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Minutes are accepted. Okay, we have two. We have one request for a two year exemption.
Whoa.
What's going on with this?
Uh, so this is nine oh nine Main Street. Uh, so they have an approval for an excavation and fill permit that was approved by this commission, uh, two years ago. They have some potential zoning violations, um, from the zoning enforcement officer. They're pretty minor in nature. It was silt fence and things of that nature. Um, however, we had also let them know that their excavation and fill permit, um, expires at the end of the year. I think it expires in December. Um, the other, however, caveat to this is I am, I am not in the office this whole week. I'm technically on vacation. And so they have an outstanding surety bond, which they were supposed to update prior to the extension being approved. Um, they were supposed to get Chrissy the paperwork and I don't have any notice from her, um, that that was done. So I would say that if it's possible, we will push this to our next meeting in two weeks. Um, and I will get confirmation from them that they have the, um, that their surety bond has been updated and Thomas, you and I can touch base. I don't actually know where they are and they're outstanding violations.
Yeah, we could talk about it offline if you want to.
Okay, yeah.
What's going on?
They had some outstanding violations, uh, that were brought to my attention. Um, one of the things that's still outstanding that they haven't rectified is submitting, uh, daily logs or weekly logs of the excavation and fill that they've been doing.
So you want a table listed for two weeks?
I believe we'll be back.
Yeah, let's see if we can get them, uh, if we can get them to do those. Yeah, if they have outstanding items, I'm not inclined to recommend that this commission, um, extend their permits um, until they're, they're able to get us what is required from their, uh, original permit.
Second is a request for bond goes L C P twenty twenty one dash oh nine, which is fifteen sixty five Monroe Turnpike.
Yes, they have a bond of $18,000. Um, I have gone and visited the site. Um, uh, in February earlier this year, I had a couple outstanding comments, um, which they did over the summer and then I went back out again July thirty, thirty first, twenty twenty four. They also submitted the most up to date as built plan on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Um, and, uh, they have satisfied all of my outstanding comments. Um, so I am recommending that the bond be released.
Cheryl, I intend a motion to release the bond.
Make a motion to release the bond, S C P twenty twenty one dash oh nine, fifteen sixty five Monroe Turnpike. How much was it for?
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand. For eighteen thousand.
All right, motion by mine, you need? Second.
You son of a
All of the favor, aye?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Okay, motion is unanimous. Motion carries. Bond is released.
Table.
Correspondence, uh, nothing that I know of. I have no report, any commissioner reports?
I have something, uh, boy. So I want to discuss the, the hole in the, in front of the Chipotle. Um, I know that, that retention pond. So have you guys gone by that lately? It's, it's, doesn't look very nice. I mean,
They fenced it, right?
They put a fence around it, but now like the weeds are growing in and it's just, I don't know, to me, it just They put a fence around it, but now like the weeds are growing in and it's just, I don't know, to me, it just looks like it's a eyesore. I mean, that wasn't on the original plans. That wasn't supposed to be there. I thought they were gonna fix it. I thought the fence was just a temporary kind of thing.
But it's supposed to be underground.
Yeah.
It wasn't on the original plans?
It was, it was on the, on the Rick Schultz did a little, uh, sliding.
So Kathleen, are you familiar with that at all?
I am somewhat familiar with it. Um, what has been said is my understanding. I haven't looked at the plans. James has been handling it. Um, but yes, uh, at some point, uh, past staff approved a version of what you see there. However, I don't believe the town engineer at that time was consulted. Um, and therefore what was permitted didn't meet, um, some of the regulations. So James has been working with them in order to make it in compliance with, uh, stormwater regulations for the state. Um, as part of that, he did make them put a fence around it just because it is a very big hole in the ground. Um, and there's a lot of, uh, traffic, not necessarily adjacent to it, but in that general area, cause it's right next to the parking lot. Um, I don't know if they've actually satisfied all of his comments, cause I do know he had a couple outstanding ones in order to make sure it was in compliance. Um, so I can follow up with him on that. Um, and at the same time, if he does have some outstanding stuff, we can mention to them about general maintenance and, um, trying to make sure it's a little more tidier than what it currently is at the moment.
I mean, I don't, I don't know why the property owner would want it to look like that anyway. I mean, especially with the Starbucks going right next, it's gonna be, you know, right in the middle, you know, like.
Yeah.
You gotta make some plantings, I don't know, something, so it doesn't look so bad.
Like a ditch.
Yeah.
Any other commissioner reports?
No, sir. I just had a question to ask Kathleen. Kathleen, on the thing that you sent to people for that workshop?
Yes.
That, is that a mandatory thing for this commission or no?
Nope, I think the planning and zoning commission, you guys are all up to date on your credits you're required to do for basically continuing education commissioner credits, um, every four years. Um, or your term, and I know that you guys all did, or every other year. I have to look to see what, what you guys are, because it's different for different commissions. Um, but right now, uh, everybody on planning and zoning, I believe, is up to date. It's more of zoning board of appeals. It's not up to date. We've had some new people besided. Um, and it's just if anybody's interested, um, you know, in that.
Right, so. All right, so that, we, we pay for that? Does it make, how's that work?
Oh, if you're interested in it, yeah, come talk to us. There's some funds in the, um.
Okay, all right. No, actually, so I was wondering how it works.
Yeah, I can talk to Bill Holesworth and see how it was done in the past, cause I wasn't here when they set up, um, your training, um, previously. And there's a bunch of free opportunities as well. And so we haven't had to deal with one of those costs, but if you're interested in it, yeah, let's talk and we'll, we'll work something out.
Yeah, that's, I left you method, right? But I know you want a patient, so that's why I was gonna ask you. You get a message for that, so.
Any other, uh, commissioner reports? Land use staff report, I don't think you have a, do you?
I just.
Thomas. Okay, I think you go first.
Um, I just have a minor one from the planning and zoning commission. I, I think it was circulated in your packets last week. I'm just keeping you guys up to date on building permit certificate of occupancies. We haven't had a ton of commercial, um, work being done. We've had a ton of residential um, and some other items, so this is a much less of a list than it's been in the past, but we are continuing to issue the building permits um, and the zoning compliance certificates for twelve seventy four Monroe Turnpike, which is Legacy Lane. So five Legacy Lane has come through, and I know they have a couple more in the queue that I will get to when I get back. Um, certificate of occupancies, everybody knows that five oh five Main Street Testos was issued because you can see it up and running. Um, it is a temporary certificate of occupancy. They still have not done a couple outstanding items that they need for the permanent certificate of occupancy and and I have to close out the, um, the outdoor dining, I believe, right before I left, they put the door in, they put the finishing touches on the door to go to that. So I have to go do a site visit, um, and then at that point we'll be able to close out their outdoor dining permits. Um, and six fifteen Main Street, uh, minor site plan approval for, uh, best in backyards. They will be updating that lighting, um, hopefully soon, which I know was a nuisance, um, to the to the surrounding area. So that is my report and I will head it over to Thomas.
I have an enforcement actions report. This is for the last two weeks of July, uh, for August and up to, uh, today, September first, September. Um, three ninety five Crosshill Road was sent a request for voluntary compliance on July twenty fifth regarding applied premises in the form of seriously overgrown brush shrubs and weeds at least one foot in length. Property owner was given until August eighth to remedy the violation and as of August seventh, the lawn was cut. Forty Bagburn Road received a notice of violation sent on seven thirty twenty twenty four regarding the housing of roosters on a property and not large enough to do so. This notice of violation was sent due to a lack of response from, uh, request of voluntary compliance. And on eight, six, twenty twenty four, the property owner came into town hall to confirm the rooster had been removed from the property. Uh, one eighty one Hattertown.
Remove it into a chicken pot or something, or did he just?
They could have, yeah. They didn't give me, it's just not in the coop anymore. Uh, one eighty one Hattertown Road, uh, original notice of violation was sent on six eighteen twenty twenty four for operating an automobile body shop, sales shop within a residential farming district. The property owners were informed staff that they would be moving the business to a location in West Haven. However, in August, it was discovered that they were still operating the business out of their, um, Monroe property. A notice to cease and desist was sent on eight twenty two twenty twenty four to immediately stop operating the business. Uh, follow-up inspection, inspection is scheduled for September thirteenth to confirm the business is no longer in operation at the property in Monroe. Six seventy nine Main Street, a request for voluntary compliance was sent on August first regarding sightline issues on the corner of Main Street and Hillcrest Road. Property owner has worked with town staff to modify the landscaping, so that is compliant with zoning regulations. A follow-up inspection with myself and the town engineer needs will happen. Uh, we've been speaking with the resident to confirm, uh, a date and time for the follow-up inspection. And a big thank you to the social services department for working with planning and zoning staff and the property owner to hire help to modify the landscaping. Eighty two Elm Street, a notice of violation was sent on August second. We're operating as an automobile sales shop within an RF one zone. The inland wetlands violations were also found on the property and the property is partially located within a flood zone. So the property owner is currently working with town staff to remediate the violations. Two sixteen Cutler's Farm Road, a citation of zoning violation was sent on August twelfth regarding several ongoing violations, including the non-permitted parking and storage of commercial vehicles on the property. The original notice of violation was sent on three thirty twenty twenty three. The first order to cease and correct was sent on five twenty three twenty twenty three. The second order to cease and correct was sent on two eight twenty twenty four. And I sent a letter to the property owners on five eight twenty 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 four to no effect. The property owners had until eight twenty two twenty twenty four to request a citation hearing. It did not do so. As a result, the property owner is admitting liability of the violations and now has thirty days until nine eleven twenty twenty four to remediate the violations and pay the initial fine of a hundred and fifty dollars. Violation fees will continue to accrue at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per day for every day after the initial thirty days from the date of receipt of the citation until the violations are remediated. One sixteen Gristmill Road.
It's a hundred and fifty dollars a day after nine eleven?
Yes, after nine eleven. They still have to pay the initial fee of a hundred and fifty. And then if they don't remediate the violations, it's a hundred and fifty per day after the initial thirty days. Uh, one sixteen Gristmill Road, an application for an accessory dwelling unit was submitted along with a zoning location survey. After review of the survey, it was determined that there was an unpermitted structure, a detached prefabricated garage that was installed without a zoning compliance certificate that violated side setback properties lines. A notice of violation was sent on eight fifteen twenty twenty four regarding an unpermitted structure. The property owner provided proof that the structure had been erected more than three years ago. So according to Connecticut general statute, eight thirteen A, uh, the structure is now considered to be non-conforming. The application for the accessory dwelling unit has not been approved, however, since there are still currently inland wetland violations on the property. Two ninety six Garter Road, a request for voluntary compliance was sent on eight twenty one twenty twenty four regarding unpermitted work. The original zoning compliance certificate was issued on April second, twenty twenty. However, there was a discontinuance of work from the previous owners to the new property owners. So a new application for zoning approval needs to be submitted. To this day, we have not had any contact with the new property owners. Eight forty six Main Street, in order to cease and desist, was sent on eight twenty three twenty twenty four for unpermitted work being done. According to SEP twenty twenty three, twenty three, file number sixteen fifty four A, there were several conditions of approval that needed to be fulfilled prior to the start of work that had not been completed, including submitted and endorsed set of drawings, the posting of a thirteen thousand dollar bond, providing a record of the latest Department of Transportation correspondence and having a pre-construction meeting with town staff. The contractor did reach out on nine four twenty twenty four to set up a pre-construction meeting. And finally, three eighty Monroe Turnpike, a service request was opened via our Q Alert online, um, system regarding a mattress that was dumped over the retaining wall in the rear of the plaza. Um, myself, I met with the manager owner of, uh, Colonial Cleaners and Jenny's Pizzeria. And Jenny's Pizzeria happily volunteered to reach out to, uh, the property owner to have the maintenance crew come out and remove the mattress. I received a call the next day stating the issue would be taken care of and as of eight thirty twenty twenty four, the mattress has been removed. So a big thanks to Jenny Pizzeria for their help. And that's it.
Oh, thank you, Thomas.
I got a little question to ask. Go ahead. Thomas, what's going on with Josie's? Right? Have you been back over there?
Yeah, it's a permitted structure that you guys approved. It just looks a lot larger because.
I thought that there was two, they had two kitchens in there.
Well, I wasn't, I didn't go inside, so I don't know if there's two kitchens inside, but there is a detachment.
Something, I think, right, Catherine?
There was an issue in the past where I think the, the main building, the main single family home had the two kitchens. And so, uh, the previous zoning enforcement officer issued a violation. However, it was remediated with the condition that they wouldn't require them to take out the second kitchen until the accessory dwelling unit was CO'd. That is, that is what was agreed, so I don't believe the ADU has been CO'd at this point, of which case per past conversations with past staff, they can keep the second kitchen until they can move. I guess whoever is using the second kitchen into the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
What was the address on that?
Ninety six.
Oh, we're trying to talk about.
So it, it is the size of what they proposed?
Yes, accessory dwelling units can be a thousand square feet, which is what was approved. They have a thousand square feet plus they have another two hundred for the garage. Um, so that's why it looks a little large, but.
So it's livable floor area cannot exceed a thousand square feet, but because there's detached garage to it, it looks a lot larger than it is. It has an unfinished basement.
So.
They have a CO now?
No.
Do not have a CO.
How long are they over there? Anybody been over there inspected lately?
I'm not too sure if the building department has.
How's the attic on that house? Yeah. No, but nobody's been over there, I guess, right?
The, uh, we've talked to the, well, we're, we're talking to the building department about it. There's, um, we, he and I sat down and looked at the records the other day. But no, I don't believe he's been asked to, uh, go out for an inspection, uh, recently.
Okay. Just wondering about that.
Uh, Cheryl, intend a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait. Subcommittee, I need us to schedule.
Aren't you on vacation?
Yes, I need us to schedule subcommittee.
Oh, almost made it.
So close.
How about we do it when you come back from vacation?
Uh, because we have stuff, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to move through.
All right, let's look at it. Wanna go back to Mondays? Monday, Monday.
Yes, um.
I'll see the next Monday or the sixteenth.
Why not?
Sixteenth is no good for me.
Let's not do the sixteenth.
Yeah, let's not do the sixteenth.
Are you, would you be ready next Monday?
No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't.
Three third?
Twenty third.
Three third?
Twenty third.
Is it on twenty three?
Yeah. Twenty third, okay with you?
I'm triple checking. Uh, yes, let's do the twenty third.
Okay. We do it five thirty?
Five thirty is good by my.
Five thirty?
That works.
Don't tell Bill Batar. He'll show up. Can we leave now?
Twenty third, five thirty. All right, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn by Mayne.
Westland seconds it.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much.
West.